Yeah. John first, hey Rick, John first is coming in now. Jonathan had to leave, John first is gonna come in.
Oh, John first is here?
Correct. Let me just meet.
Hi.
Six forty-seven.
Hi.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. Jefferson, how you doing? One over. I'm the deputy mayor, the mayor couldn't make it, but we're all set. Okay? Thank you, thank you for coming, appreciate it, yeah. Oh, you did? It happens, it happens. Alright, we got a couple more minutes here. Let me get. Set.
How are you?
That's this.
Oh, we still have three minutes.
Yes, yeah, that's why I'm just. You want to go through the, um... Did he say, oh, did he say when? Meaning.
There was something with USDA, I don't know about New York.
Yeah, I think that we're, just check.
Are you getting a lot of applications for the village? Really?
People wanting to, but I'm telling them no. Cause we haven't christened it yet.
Alright.
And we don't have the application.
Well, we do, we kinda have it now.
And I get about one.
Subject to approval.
Yeah, I get about one call a week maybe.
We have all the stuff, all the rates and everything.
Do you remember what he said, Bill, in regards to where we're at in New York? I know the next meeting, I know it is, we're setting up a meeting, we're meeting with the state, it just hasn't happened yet. In regards to New York Forward, um...
Well, they'll explain what the agreement is.
Yeah, how we go, yeah.
And fund each project.
Are we gonna have a dedication of it, like a ribbon cutting?
Oh, I, I think Jim wanted to, I think we should.
Okay. Hear the bells. Alright, we're up. Okay. Okay, good evening, everyone, why don't we all rise and say the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming to the June seventeenth, uh, business meeting, the Cornwall and Hudson. Unfortunately, Jim, well fortunately for him, but Jim Galliano, the mayor, could not make it as he's down, um, with his wife down in Florida for a few days for a mini-vacation. Well deserved. To begin the meeting, we have a couple of proclamations, one of which is to recognize an outstanding young man who lives in our community, uh, by the name of Jefferson McDonald. And Jefferson, um, who do you have with you? Well, thank you for coming, we really appreciate it. I will tell you this. Um, oh, excuse me. Yes, I first have to make a motion to open the meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you both for that. So, um, it's a lengthy proclamation and it's very well-written, it was not written by me, so I don't want you to think, think that it was, but let me go through this, um, Jefferson, and then we'll have you come up and present it. And if you, along with your mom, and if you would like to take pictures, we'll do that too, okay? So, whereas Jefferson Caldwell McDonald, the son of Dr. Robert and Mrs. Christine McDonald, is a resident of Cornwall and Hudson, New York, a recent graduate of Cornwall Central High School, and was a distinguished member of Cornwall and Hudson's Boy Scout Troop two, two zero six. On the occasion of his achieving the distinguished rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank attainable on the Scouts BSA program administered by the Boy Scouts of America, the Cornwall and Hudson, New York, community is supremely proud of his accomplishments. During the COVID nineteen pandemic, Jefferson attended our local New York Military Academy and excelled in rigorous environment while being acknowledged with the Best New Candidate Award, followed by the Hardy Gold Medal for School Leadership during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one academic year. A superb student-athlete, Jefferson has feasted on advanced placement courses at Cornwall Central High School while participating in football, wrestling, and track programs. The Cornwall Football Program awarded him the prestigious Dragon Award for his dedication, perseverance, and tenaciousness. And, whereas, beyond academics, sports, and activities provided by the school district, Jefferson has also sought out additional opportunities to better prepare himself for a bright future as a young leader of consequence. The extracurricular activities included participation in the United States Naval Sea Cadet Corps, where he served as a squad leader. He was also called to the ministry and participates in the religious vocation realm as a Eucharistic minister at Saint Marian Coe Parish at Saint Thomas of Canterbury Roman Catholic Church in Cornwall and Hudson. This ethos of service to community is what naturally drew him to the Boy Scouts and encapsulates his Eagle Scout Service Project, which was based on the construction of the above-ground portion of the well-located, portion of the well-located at the circa nineteen seven, excuse me, seventeen seventy-five Edmiston House in New Windsor, New York, part of the Continental Army's encampment immediately following George Washington's victory at Yorktown. And as an Eagle Scout Award represents a lifelong achievement emblematic of the highest traditions of the Boy Scouts of America and is reflective of Jefferson's hard work, dedication, and steadfast commitment to service and adherence to the guiding principles of scouting, this award places him in a rarefied air as only six percent of BSA Scouts earned this coveted distinction. Now therefore, be it resolved, that by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, on the occasion of Jefferson Caldwell McDonald's well-deserved appointment to the United States Military Preparatory School, the Village Board of Trustees extends its best wishes for continued access. Your hometown is incredibly proud, James Galliano, Mayor. So, congratulations. Well deserved. Uh, would you like to come up and take, would you like to say anything, Jefferson? You don't have to, I don't wanna put you on the spot, no, that's, well, first, come on up and if your mom wants to take a picture, or we could, I could take a picture, um, of the two of you guys, whatever you want, whatever you wanna do. Okay, alright, so why don't you hold this, Jefferson, alright?
Thank you, sir.
You want me to take a picture of the two of you? You sure? You sure? Hey, congratulations, and, uh, beyond the Boy Scouts Military Prep School, and when do you start?
I start July the 2nd.
Alright, well, very, good luck to you, and you are obviously a, a great example for, for the youth in, in our community, and your, your parents must be very, very proud. So, thanks for coming, really, it's a great, a great, uh, great way to celebrate the youth in, in Cornwall and Hudson, so thanks again. Congratulations. Okay, the next proclamation. And if you, you guys can stay for this, wherever you wanna do, um, after this proclamation, things get a little boring, so, so to speak, so, don't feel like you need to stay, but thanks, thanks again for coming. Okay, so this is a proclamation that Jim wanted to recognize the members of Riverfest, well-deserved, for twenty-five years of, of putting this together. And so, it's very, very well-deserved, Jim was planning this for a while, so again, um, I didn't write this, Jim did, cause he's a very, very good writer, as you could say. So, let me just get to the proclamation. So, whereas, Riverfest is quintessentially Cornwall and Hudson, New York, celebration of community and, and the village's Dunnyhue Memorial Park riverfront, replete with sweeping views of majestic Hudson River and the breathtaking Lower Hudson region. The brainchild of former Deputy Mayor Tony Ferraro, his wife Kathy, and current Town of Cornwall Deputy Supervisor Wengold, Riverfest celebrated its twenty-fifth anniversary on Sunday, June second, twenty twenty-four, and has been held every year since its inception in nineteen ninety-eight, save for a brief pandemic-related pause. The annual celebration draws between three thousand to five thousand of our local community members, friends, neighbors, visitors, vendors, craftsmen, and performers. And, whereas, the two, twenty twenty-four Riverfest Committee consisted of, as per usual, a small dedicated group of local volunteers that included the aforementioned Chairman Gold, Morgan Fitzgerald, Jamie Fox, Gloria Gerard, Gene Hanlon.
Jen.
Jen, excuse me, Jen Hanlon, okay. Brian Hunt, Bob Keegan, Roksha, Michael Rozzy, did I get that, Ms. Roksha, where are you? Yes. You didn't, I, I am sorry.
It's Roksha.
It's Roksha, okay, I'm sorry. Bob Petrilli, Ranji Savaraman, and Pam Stockton, volunteers are the rocket fuel for our community's engine. They show up and perform thankless tasks, most often toiling in obscurity, rolling up their sleeves, sends complaints, handling all the necessary behind-the-scenes hard work that makes an event a success. This year's crew was especially positive, engaging, and energetic, bringing can-do spirit to another successful Riverfest celebration. And whereas, the greater Cornwall community benefits greatly from the annual exposure that Riverfest provides to our tourism industry, as well as local shops, eateries, and businesses, Riverfest has remained a commercial force multiplier for a quarter-century and on the, and on the circle-the-date attraction that is eagerly anticipated in the environs, environs miles, miles outside of Cornwall and Hudson. This all due to the intrepid volunteers who have contributed greatly to a historic brand. Now therefore, be it resolved, that by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, and on the occasion of yet another highly-successful Riverfest, and on behalf of an appreciative Board of Trustees, we extend our heartfelt appreciation to Wengold, Morgan Fitzgerald, Jamie Fox, Gloria Gerard, Jen Hanlon, Brian Hunt, Bob Keegan, Roksha, Michael Rozzy, Bob Petrilli, Ranji Savaraman, and Pam Stockton. Thank you to all past committee volunteers, special thanks to co-founders and plankholders Kathy Ferraro and her late husband Tony Ferraro. Bravo and well-done all, James A. Galliano, Mayor. Congratulations. When, would you, would you or one of the members would like to come up and say a couple of words about the Riverfest, you're more than welcome if you'd like to, and you can, if you wanna receive this on behalf of the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
This is why I never want to speak after the mayor. He's a tough act to follow. I just wanna thank the, the Village Board, the mayor, uh, Dave, Charlie, Steve, the Villa, I'm sorry, Doris. The Village has been incredibly supportive, uh, they make it easy for us to put on our party to which we invite three to five thousand of our closest friends, and we've been doing it for twenty-five years. And, we don't see an end in sight, but the credit really goes to my committee, I know you don't want to, but, committee members, stand up.
Please, indeed.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm, names, I don't, I know, I know Ms. Roksha from when my son was like five years old, so.
I'm Jen.
You're Jen, okay, nice. Gloria.
Bob Petrilli.
Bob, a pleasure, thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
They do the heavy lifting, and I seem to get all the credit, and I'm good with that. But you can see that it is a small committee, about half of them are here, and we, we genuinely appreciate both the support and the recognition from the Village Board, so thank you. And I am gonna take you up on your offer to bail.
One, one question, was this, I know when we were down there this year, was this the highest-attended?
You know, there's no way for us to keep track of that.
Yeah.
I mean, we, I guess we could put somebody there with a pitch counter, but, um, from what we observed, it seems like that this was the, the most people who have ever attended. I mean, Jen's on the front line, she can probably answer it better than you, cause she's the one who deals with all the kids.
Wow.
From the kids' tent, one thousand percent.
Wow, so. That's great, so when, twenty-five years, how about the three of you, four of you, how many years each?
Twenty, for me.
Forty-five?
Wow, that is outs...
Eight, nine?
Eight or nine.
And Roksha's a newcomer, only a couple.
There you go.
You're still recruiting as well, right? I mean, some of the names are new, newer folks, right?
One of the things that happens is, people don't seem to leave my committee unless they move out of the area or pass away, so.
Life membership.
Yeah, something like that, but again, thank you very much.
Well.
And, um, we're looking forward to next year.
Absolutely, well, thank you very, very much, we truly, truly appreciate it, you make this community a much better place just because of having that and all your volunteerism, so much appreciated.
We do it cause we enjoy it.
That is even, that is even better, and we enjoy the results of it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, take care. Okay, before we move on to mundane matters, uh, we'll now open it up for public comment, if anybody has a comment they would like to make to the board. Seeing none, we'll move on. Don't worry, don't feel bad if you gotta leave, take care, thanks again. Best of luck, Jefferson. Okay, we're gonna start with approval of the minutes from, um, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, so, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May twentieth, twenty-four. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, approval of the minutes for June tenth, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June tenth of twenty twenty-four, special meeting, can I get a second?
Second.
All in fa, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I must, uh...
Yeah, that's you, so you abstain, Bill abstains. Okay. Alright, moving on to the monthly department reports, I'll start with the treasures report for June twenty twenty-four. Uh, reconciling the monthly bank statements, for the May monthly water report, the village was one thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars, one hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-two cents, thirty-four cents, excuse me. And the town, five hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-six cents, totaling six hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and seventy cents. As for warrant number six, which includes prepaid, that is in the amount of seven hundred and six thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and nineteen cents. Okay, moving on to monthly revenue and expenditure reports by fund, the general fund revenue was three million, ninety-seven thousand, eighteen dollars and forty-three cents. Expenditures amounted to one million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety cents. As for the water fund revenue, one million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, fifty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. Expenditures amounted to eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and sixty-one cents. For sewer funds revenue, it was eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and four dollars and twenty-one cents, and expenditures amounted to thirty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. So, the total receipts were four million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents, which was fifty point two zero six nine percent in anticipated revenues. With respect to expenditures, it was two million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixteen cents, representing a twenty-five point eight zero one eight percent in anticipated expenditures through May. The balance collected for the sewer capital is six hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-one cents through May, and the total taxes collected through May twenty-fourth was two million, nine hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. Let's see, noted here is the ongoing training with Megan and Springbrook, uh, night-class, oh, night-class interest as of eight AM of this morning was eight thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents, but that's excellent. They're going through OCS, so Megan and Paula are going through OCS, State Controls Accounting School, and the GFAO seminar, upcoming seminar regarding EFC Water Funding and Infrastructure, who'll be doing that? Megan and Paula, okay, great. Okay. Any questions on any of that? Alright, let's move on to the Building Department, Dave Carnwright, please.
Okay. Village of Cornwall and Hudson Building Department Report for May twenty twenty-four, building permits issued sixteen, certificate of compliance occupancy issued nine, onsite inspections twenty-three, violations four, stop-work orders zero, municipal searches for solar panels zero, and fire inspections one, Manny Carmona, code enforcement officer, who is on vacation, I believe.
Yes, that is, that is true, and, um, last week, he couldn't make the meeting cause due to a family matter, I believe his mom was sick, he was visiting her. So, um, his assistant, James, attended last week's meeting and answered, um, questions then. Any questions of any of the board members that we need to relate to, Manny? No? Okay. Seeing none, let's move on to the Fire Department, and that is Lori Beth.
Okay. May two thousand and twenty-four, department report, um, fires, one, EMS calls, two, good-intent calls, two, false alarms, two, standby, three, helicopter LZ, one, wires down, two, MVA, one, drills, three, meetings, two, memorial service, one, other, two. Total volunteer hours, three hundred and sixty-five point seven five, total events, twenty-two. What is BFIS, oh, that's insurance, our insurance provider presented its first estimate for the repair of engine four twelve at two hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents. The estimate includes one thousand, one hundred and fifty-five point three labor hours and a used body from West Virginia. We understand that the substitute body is eight inches to, I'm sorry, feet, inches.
Yeah.
Inches. I was like, wow, how come? Too long for a fire engine, so this repair may not be possible. Uh, May's fire was an outdoor rubbish construction debris fire that threatened a residence, our crews extinguished the fire quickly and efficiently.
So, we can either ask Charlie or Rick, anything else, you guys, you guys wanna note anything? Alright, you wanna pass it off to Charlie, Charlie, anything, anything of note?
Eight inches backwards, it's actually the body's eight inches too short, is my understanding now?
Oh, wow, sure, oh, it's not a firehouse problem.
No, it's not a firehouse problem, it's, it's the body fitting onto the rig.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, that, that proposable may or may not be feasible, they're flying somebody down to West Virginia to actually measure the body.
So, so Charlie, are there, um, I'm assuming, are they still looking, you know, they found this body, are they still looking for other?
Right now, right this second, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
They're, they're going down there to measure it.
Yeah.
Is, is the last I understood.
Okay.
That, that number of, uh, labor hours jumps out to me, eleven hundred and fifty-five, is that, is that actual human person hours working on the rig? That just seems like, I mean, it's a big truck, I recognize, but that sounds like a lot.
There, there's a lot, there's a lot to do, I'll, I'll forward you the, um...
No, no, that's great, I just wanna understand that it's not a typo, I guess.
No, it's not a typo, um, Michael Bigg, um, said if, if this repair is even feasible, it, it would be, they'd be working on it for a year.
Okay. Charlie, just so, to keep the, the public informed, um, engine four one two is out of service, but during this time, we're covered, right? Can you just say, you know?
We're covered, that, that's normally our second due engine, right now, we have Cornwall on automatic response for any structure fires in the village. The real problem comes when engine four one one needs servicing.
Okay.
As the mayor likes to say, if you have one, you have none, if you have two, you have one.
So, at this point, though, we're, we're fully covered and there's no issue.
No.
Okay, alright, alright, just, you know, keep us, keep us updated, thank you. Alright.
What was the helicopter?
Yes.
That was a mutual aid call to Cornwall, there was a head-on accident on Route thirty-two, so while they were working on the extrication, we set up the, uh, the landing zone at the old Star.
Where'd you set it up, Charlie?
At the old Star Expansion.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks. That happened, I, I think that's the first time, I've never seen that, is this the first time you got, I'm sure it's not the first time you've done it, but I've never seen it on one of your reports in a long...
COH.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, I just never seen it on a report, I guess.
I don't know that I've ever called it out that way.
Yeah, okay, alright, very good. Okay, next up, we have the Police Department, Bill.
Cornwall and Hudson Police Department Monthly Report, May first, twenty twenty-four through the thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. There were four hundred and four total calls for service, no felony calls, uh, for misdemeanors and violations, there was one call for fraud, two criminal mischief, and two harassment or aggravated harassment, there was one felony arrest. Vehicle and traffic, uh, calls and incidents, there were, there was one personal injury accident, one property damage accident, four traffic summonses issued, five traffic warnings issued, two parking summonses issued, ten traffic enforcement posts, and two speed or radar sign postings. Non-criminal activity included five fire response calls, three domestic incidents, three alarm response calls, one noise complaint, seven suspicious incident calls, six animal complaints, and one disorderly person call. And departmental assists, the, uh, COHPD assisted the Town of Cornwall eight times, five times with EMS, twice with other agencies, once with other police agencies, performed two welfare checks, and one citizen's assist. During the month of May twenty twenty-four, Cornwall and Hudson Police Department received a law enforcement technology grant in the amount of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars from the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services, this grant award funding will be used to purchase a card-scanned fingerprinting system for COHPD HQ. During the month of May twenty twenty-four, Cornwall and Hudson Police Department received four brand-new police vehicle computers, scanners, and printers through a New York State Police Trax Grant Award. Also during the month of May, Cornwall and Hudson Police Officers attended firearms training and qualification, which was held at the Town of New Windsor PD Firearms Range. And also during the month of May twenty twenty-four, COHPD officers participated in Orange County Stop DWI Grant Funding Traffic Enforcement. Respectfully submitted, Chief Stephen E. Dixon.
Chief, anything to note?
Just to let you know that the, uh, the two recently hired officers are doing, uh, doing very well, also Sanchez is, uh, completed her field training, she's on her own, and also Grigas should be completing his field training by the, by the end of this month.
Excellent, chief, the felony, what was it in general?
That was a, uh, that was a domestic violence incident.
Okay. Alright. With regards to the technology grant, is this, is this the first one we've gotten since, or we get this, um, annually typically?
So, um, last year, the state put out a fifty-million-dollar grant that was opened to all police departments throughout the, uh, state, for anything related to law enforcement technology, and we put in for a couple of items, I believe I put in for about forty thousand dollars worth of items, subsequently given just under fifteen thousand threshold, but, um, this was the, uh... We subsequently given just under fifteen thousand threshold, but this was the, the card scan system was the, was on the top of list that we wanted. So, we're just waiting right now just to have the checks sent to us.
Right, and that, and just elaborate on that, just so the public knows why, why we're getting a finger, fingerprinted card system?
Sure, so currently, right now, we do have a, what's deemed a principal arrest. We have to go over to the town PD, we piggyback on their, what's called a card scan fingerprint system, where you take your physical print card, you scan it, and that gets entered into the state registry for arrest. We also need that when we have to arraign somebody, they request a, immediate fingerprint repository response. So, with this, it'll save the officers from having to leave the station here, go to the town, process them there a second time, and then bring them back here. So, with this, obviously, it'd be a lot more convenient, and officers should become more proficient with the system too, the fact that it's here at our headquarters.
Great, and when do you think this, this will be up and running?
Well, it was approved, so it's just a question of when the state's just gonna route the money directly to our, our bank that we use. But as soon as it comes in, I'm gonna set up, I've already gotten estimates for it and everything, so that's just a question of the monies and when the company's available to do the setup.
Excellent, all right. For the vehicle computers, those replaced the ones that were in our patrol vehicles before, right?
Yeah, so when I first came here, we got a, we got a grant through the Orange County Sheriff's Office. I assigned a couple of laptop computers which are in each vehicle. They're probably close to ten years old or older, so I researched it and was able to get four brand-new computers, tablets, scanners, and printers, and we're just waiting for the mounting hardware to come to do the install, that should be next month sometime.
Is there any value left in the old ones that?
We're definitely gonna hold on to them, sure.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They've been very good for us, and, you know, we don't have any problems with them right now. Well, the only problem was when the county switched over, because they were only Windows seven, able to get on Windows seven, so they had to do some tape and glue work to enable to upgrade them to the current Windows eleven. With these new computers, they will have that installed automatically, so.
Thanks, Chief. All right, moving on, Public Works Department, Dave?
Yes, Village of Cornwall and Hudson Department of Public Works, May twenty twenty-four. Trash collected for the month, one hundred and thirteen point six four tons. Recycling collected for the month, eleven point eight tons. Yard waste collected for the month, a hundred yards. Electronic items recycled, five thousand, nine hundred and fifty pounds. What, did we dump a dumpster? Okay, very good. Repairs and maintenance, village-owned vehicles and equipment continues. Mowing and trimming of village-owned properties has resumed. Sweeping the streets, blacktop patching. Electric along with low-voltage lighting and ceiling fans were installed at the pavilion. If you've been down there at night, they did a great job, it's really nice. New sidewalks were installed on Hudson Street from Village Hall to two eighteen. Treated three thousand, nine hundred and five feet of sewer main with root control. Millman paved Maple Road, funded by C-H-E-N-G, due to gas main improvements. Notes, new fleet maintenance vehicle is now in service, also new caseloader. Eight twenty-one G has been delivered and will be in service soon. Dave Halverson, Superintendent Public Works. Thanks, Dave.
Dave, you want to point out a couple of things, because one was a big success, number twelve, the Maple Road?
Maple Road, they, Central Hudson installed all-new gas main up there, replaced all the steel man with plastic. They had to reconnect every house, so I've been working with them, and we've been, we were able to negotiate instead of them paying a private contractor to come in and do the repairs, which we would require them to mill and pave everything that they disturbed. It was actually cheaper using our, piggybacking on our bid with the county and the state for milling and paving. We were able to do the full width, the length of the road that they disturbed for less money than it would actually cost them to mill and pave just the areas they disturbed.
So, pretty much it was paid by them?
Yes, it was funded, funded completely by them. We, we provided traffic control and some trucking, but the hard costs were borne by Central Hudson.
Is similar work underway or planned or about to happen for Deer Hill Road also?
I have, have a principal agreement with Central Hudson for funding for Mountain Road and Deer Hill Road. I don't know if that has come in yet or not, I haven't seen, I know I signed off, but I don't know yet. We're, and we're still working on some other avenues as well.
And would, would Deer Hill and Mountain Road the same, same thing as Maple Road, meaning they would be paying for the whole thing?
They're not gonna pay for the whole thing on, we, we have a lot of things in the queue as we speak with Mountain Road and Deer Hill Road.
Right.
With some remediation work that we have to do due to FEMA, the flood, the FEMA. We also have a meeting set up for a week from tomorrow with the USDA. We have a web meeting with them to finalize our agreement for funding that they're going to provide for us for some remediation work on the Boulevard and Mountain Road as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so people have to stand down on Mountain Road a little bit. There's a lot of stuff going on, like Dave said, they're trying to maintain the potholes that are there now. I know we've gotten a few complaints, but, you know, the road's gonna get done, and there's also the box culvert work that's gonna be done there also along with the USDA, so it's gonna, it's not gonna happen overnight.
We have a lot of work that we have to get done. My, my goal is to have it done before the end of the summer, this construction season. But we have a lot that we have to line up and get moving on, but we can't do anything until we get the final okay from FEMA, which we've still been, I think everything's finally set with them. I think we've provided them with all the documentation, Doris, correct? That they have asked for, and USDA as well.
Do you have a dollar figure from them, Dave?
Off the top of my head, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
Be somewhat between the deep, between general fund and water fund and the USDA. We're looking somewhere around two million or so dollars coming in.
Okay, and those project, those funding sources don't overlap, right?
That's why, that's why this has been.
FEMA does one thing.
That's why it's been a little bit of a challenge, because USDA has specialty in certain areas, like wetlands and stuff like that, that we have to deal with on the Boulevard, and some culvert things they cover. And FEMA's a little, it's, it was just, we had to knit everything together.
You're maximizing the award that's gonna be made by either one of the entities.
Yeah, we're trying to maximize that as well as then including Central Hudson with the work that they did and include, so it's all.
Very good. All right, Dave, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the Water Department, Bill?
Sure.
Thank you.
Village of Cornwall and Hudson Water Department, May twenty twenty-four Monthly Report. Monthly production was twenty-five million, nine hundred fifty-two thousand gallons, with a daily average of eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand gallons, which is up. Samples, we collected thirty-four samples under our approved water quality monitoring plan, treatment, routine operations, and maintenance, transmission and distribution. There were eighty-one utility markouts completed. Beeks Road fire hydrant was damaged from a motor vehicle accident. Water service shut-offs and turn-ons at owners' requests happened at Two Isro Drive and one hundred forty-seven Main Street. A curb box was repaired at Two Isro Drive. Seasonal water services were turned on for Chad Yane Traffic Circle and the Village Bandstand. Service line leak was repaired at forty-nine Cedar Lane. Spring fire hydrant flushing was completed. In terms of meters, the department read the commercial meters and read the town residential meters. Thirteen final water meter readings were completed. One residential water meter was replaced, four miscellaneous jobs were completed, and nine water line inspections were completed. The staff attended and completed a certified excavator training sponsored by UDig New York. Staff completed a licensed water treatment operator continuing education training sponsored by the New York Rural Water Association. And new rain gutter system was installed at the Black Rock Water Treatment Plant and Jackson Avenue Water Treatment Plant. Sincerely, Michael P. Trainer, Senior Water Superintendent.
Mike could not make it tonight, he is under the weather, and there's no one else from the Water Department here, so. Any, any board members have any questions? We can relay them to, to Mike.
Yeah, was it in May that they attended the Rural Water Association meeting, or was that in early June? In any case, they received recognition at that event, which was something we're all very proud of and appreciative of.
Okay, moving on to the last report, New Windsor EMS. Okay, the report for twenty twenty-four with respect to personnel was one new part-time paramedic, two new volunteers, no staff injuries or issues. As for operations, there were four hundred and ninety-six total dispatches, and one hundred percent of the calls were covered, so that's over two, twenty-three hundred calls for the year. Three hundred twenty, there were three hundred twenty-four patients transported, that's a record. Two hundred sixty New Windsor nine-one-one calls, sixty-eight Cornwall nine-one-one calls, and seven Village of Cornwall and Hudson nine-one-one calls. The average response times for New Windsor was six minutes, four seconds. Town of Cornwall, five minutes, ten seconds, and Cornwall and Hudson, six minutes, six seconds. The Cornwall unit covered eleven calls in New Windsor, New Windsor covered ten calls in Cornwall and the village. A new fly car sent for lights and emergency equipment, and the Keano kit purchased for treating burn patients, fifteen hundred dollars per dose. Wow, okay. As for administrative, another, a grant from Assemblyman Ikus for one hundred thousand dollars for ALS training was approved. That's great. New Windsor, excuse me, new ambulance for New Windsor is slated for November, and an additional order yet will take two years, will take two years to arrive. Wow. The floors were completed at the Cornwall Station. The covered Highland, they covered Highland EMS for six days as their ambulance all broke and added a crew, which they paid for, all right. New Windsor EMS, excuse me, Newburgh EMS was approved for ALS, and this will decrease mutual aid in revenue. And that's about it. Michael Biggs, chief. Okay, that's it for the reports. It's not on the agenda, but we're gonna move on to one resolution that we want to take care of. So, the Department of Buildings Billing Department did a scrub of some of their billing with respect to sanitation, and have discovered a few errors, more than a few errors, and we want to move to correct those with respect to the sanitation fees. So, we discussed that in an executive attorney-client session right before the meeting. At this point, what we want to do is, for those affected village residents, we just want to give them the heads up before the correction is actually made. So, what we plan to do is, in the July billing cycle, we'll include a note on the sanitation bill that your corrected bill will commence beginning in, in September. So, I'm gonna make a motion to, unless there's any further discussion, anybody here, anybody want to add anything to that?
You said it well.
Okay, okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to permit the DPW Billing Department to notify affected residents in the July billing cycle of the new sanitation rate effective in their September billing cycle. This is really not, it's the new rate, meaning the corrected rate, not what they're being billed for right now. Which, okay, I added to that, let's see. September cycle, okay, which reflects the correct rate, and that each resident should, what each resident should be paying. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
I was a little butchered, but, okay, any discussion?
Just, just for the purposes of clarification, there's.
There were, yeah, I counted that before.
I think it's twenty-one residential and twelve commercial.
Twenty-one residential, oh, right, right.
Right.
Twenty-one residential, and what was the commercial, Bill?
It's twelve, it's twelve undercharged, and then additional ones that were, it's not that they were overcharged, but they were.
So, it, it does not affect that many people, but.
Okay.
If it's you, it's you.
Just to rationalize the billing for some anomalous rates that have been charged over the years.
Okay, call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, since I expanded on that, it was very simple. All we're gonna do is, the affected residents, you're gonna get notified in July billing cycle, and the new corrected bill will be in September. Okay, moving on, all right, to other business. Let's start with the Building Department Fee Schedule. So, this is, we went through this with Manny a couple of years ago. We updated the Building Department Fee Schedule. There are a number of fees that we are looking at once again, we've reviewed. We want to go over with, with Manny to see if we're going to change that. We, some of them may, we may dial back, some of them potentially would be increased. So, we're working on that, just be patient about it. It's not a wholesale change to every fee, it's selected fees. We've compared it to other municipalities and the, and the state, what's recommended by the state. So, we will get back to you on that. Hopefully, we'll be able to look at that between now and our July fifteenth meeting. Anybody have anything to add to that?
Just that we've, we've also received numerous complaints over the years about our fees versus maybe the town or another town or where somebody came from, and we've really taken most of this information into account in trying to thread the needle here on the, on the new rates. So, some, the town has their own rate schedule, and some parts have been updated, some haven't. So, mo, most of ours was not updated, correct, Jim? And some of it goes back to, literally went back to the sixties, so.
Yes, yeah.
That, that's the attempt to try to equalize this thing and make it work. We're not trying to, and we're trying to keep it fair.
Correct. All right.
That's it.
Okay, moving on, review of the town's tree law. So, we discussed this last week at, at our last meeting, and the town has passed their tree law. We're looking at it to adopt it here. I've, I know we've, most of us have already looked through this. I don't, I don't have an issue with it there. Just so people know, the proposed law does not affect single, single-family residences in regards to the removal of trees. It's more on commercial and, and residential development of two or more residents. What at this point, after talking to Joe McKay, he had suggested, which was a good suggestion, is that we should send this to the Planning Board for, have them to review it and comment on it. Joe is making some amendments to, some minor changes to the law to clarify a few things. So, I spoke to him about that today. He will have those changes sometimes this week, and then what we'll do, we'll also send it to the Planning Board, give them, typically you give them thirty days to comment, to comment on that, and then we'll take those comments into consideration. And then we were trying to set it up potentially, when was it, Doris, for adoption, July? Oh, you mean to, we're gonna, in July, we're gonna set the public hearing, okay, that's the idea, okay, very good. Anybody have, anyone else have anything to add in regards to the tree law? Okay, all right, the revised special events application. So, Doris took this upon herself.
Few months ago, right, Doris?
To revise our, our application, special events application, then it expanded because we have an application for many things. It could be now the pavilion, it could be the bandstand. What do they call the one down in the water?
The shelter.
The shelter. The shelter, the shelter, yes.
Which is a gazebo.
Which is a gazebo, right, this is what. So, and then Donahue, and Donahue Farm. Doris took it upon herself, we reviewed that. I added to it and ended up reading more like a legal document than, than anything. Bill has taken a, Bill has taken a stab at it and has made it more user-friendly. At this point, I know Joe wants us to, we have to reach out, and Doris, if you could do that, reach out to our insurer to find out what, what they would want in regards to insurance. Language to be included. With respect to that, I didn't really have an opportunity to look at Bill's proposed application, but it looks user-friendly at this point. Has anybody else had an opportunity to take a look at that, any comments on it? Or Bill, do you want to describe it?
Sure. Just working with Doris and consulting with her and looking at the applications that we have. We have, we have one online that's right, right now, where if you want to reserve one of the village properties that is reservable, it's an 11-page document with a lot of instructions in it and several places where you have to execute elements of it. And it, it has an indemnification section, it has 2 indemnification sections, which need signature from the mayor and require notary signature. And for some of the types of events and facilities reservations that we're talking about, there's some question as to whether we think that people need to hire a lawyer to, for example, have some pizza down at the pavilion or whatever it might be. So we tried to consolidate everything into a single 2-page form. It's consistent across all of the properties and event types. And then if there are thresholds that are met or required because they might need public safety assistance or cleanup or any kind of heightened activity, we can then impose additional, you know, requirements upon them. Insurance certificate documentation or an indemnification agreement that's separate from this. But the idea was to make it as simple as possible, so people can check a few boxes, indicate that I've read the indemnification agreement and will hold the village harmless, and then sign it without having to return to us an 11-page document. So that's the hope, so we can just, you know, kind of get it a little more streamlined and, and consistent across all the.
So it's down to 4 pages, right?
Well, what they would send back to us is just the 2.
Right.
And then they would check boxes that say, I have read the instructions regarding indemnification, alcohol, anything else that I'm proposing to do.
And it includes all the fees for the various, for Donahue Memorial Park, the shelter, the pavilion.
And this draft document will change because we had a couple of areas in it that were under consideration as reservable items, but they're not going to be included in the file.
Right, right. Donahue Farm, let's see. Okay, all right, so. Doris will take care of that in regards to the insurance language. And so let's try to, if everyone takes a look at it, has any, any additional comments for Doris, please get it to her, so we can have this teed up for the July 15th meeting and we can finally put this to bed, because I know Doris has told me that she's already had many inquiries in regards to renting out the various places in the village. So, okay, very good. Thank you very much, Bill, for doing that and making it very user-friendly. Okay. Next one is term limits, extension of trustees' terms and elected official salaries. Jim, the mayor brought this up. Was it, our meeting last week, but prior to that, he had mentioned it, I believe. We, the, the town, obviously, as you know, the mayor, both the mayor's terms and the trustees' terms are 2 years. In the town and many other municipalities, they split it typically. Sometimes the, the, like, town supervisor is 2 years, but then the council persons are 4 years. Some municipalities have, you know, 4 for the town supervisor, 4 for the, the councilmen, council persons, excuse me. Sometimes it's 3 years. So we're taking a look at potentially extending our terms. Maybe leaving the mayor, we spoke about it, maybe leaving the mayor at 2 years, and then the trustees extending it to 3 or 4 years. And then, so we're, we're considering that. We spoke about it at last week's meeting. Just a general consensus, what's the feeling in regards to the trustees' terms? What are, what, what do you guys think? They're gentle ladies, excuse me. What do you think, Laura Bass?
I think 3 or 4. I think that just being here since September, you know, I feel like if only having another year really to go, it's, I'm just starting to really learn and understand and have an idea of how things should work and, and what things should look like. And I just feel like it's such a quick turnaround to have someone else come in that maybe doesn't have any experience also, and then having to start from scratch over and over and over again.
Bill?
For the village our size, I haven't heard a, a super convincing reason why we would extend beyond 2 years. I feel as though the, the nature of the electoral cycle here is different from a situation where, like, in, in the town, there's such a bigger population of voters and things. It's a lot more work to run for office. You know, obviously, we all put in a lot of work to run for office and to serve. But, you know, it, it's, given the geographic footprint and the population of voters, it just, it doesn't feel as onerous to run for a 2-year term in the village as it might if, if you were in the town, I think. I'm not, I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other. I haven't really researched it deeply. I am a little hesitant around term limits, because I feel like if you have a 2-year term, that's self-limiting and the, and the, you know, village population can decide that they want to throw somebody out, throw the bums out if, if they need to. So I don't have a, I don't have a super strong feeling about it.
Yeah, I think, I think Jim actually, the last, when we took, we took that off of there, I think he meant to take that off at our last meeting, I think he, I believe he mentioned, and I, I agree with you in regard to the term limits. To me, term limits are elections, but Dave, you have any?
I just think more than 2, I would be in favor. I'm not really, I'm not really hard and fast on anything, but I think it seems like you're always running, and it's a pain, but.
Yeah, I.
I'd be okay with 3 or whatever.
I could.
I mean, I think it may require referendum, correct John?
Yeah, there's, oh, and just to add, I'm sorry to.
And it wouldn't, first of all, I just want to clarify, it's not gonna just automatically apply to the existing trustees.
That was gonna say.
So, so it would be for the next, your next election cycle, instead of running for 2 years, if you guys decide, you can run for 4 years. And as far as the ref, so it's the next election cycle will be that term.
Just extend our own.
We're not, you're not self-extending your term. This is, so, just want to make that clear. And as far as the referendum, I, I believe so, but at the very least, it's gonna require a public hearing, local law, you know, that kind of stuff. So there's definitely gonna be a public process.
I don't know if Jim, he, he had talked to, about researching it out. I don't know if he, maybe Doris knows if he did that. I think he had some facts and figures for municipalities and villages in the state.
What the distribution is.
Yeah.
I would say NICOM, New York Conference of Mayors, might be a great resource. You might want to shoot them an email to see what information they have. They probably have some helpful information, pros and cons.
That would probably be good to, just, just to know, you know? I mean, I don't know.
Doris, would you mind finding that out?
So you want to know?
Just from the, if you contact NICOM to find out.
I mean, if they can tell us, you know, there's 147 villages and 98, you know, 100 of them have 4-year terms.
Okay, what the terms?
Yeah, the terms are for the mayor and the, and the trustees.
Broke down by them, I mean.
They probably have, they probably have that.
If it's not, don't worry.
Yeah, the other thing to think about too is for a small village, sometimes it's hard to find people to run, so there might be more of advantage for 4 years.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll discuss it again next month. And with respect to the salaries, we'll have to talk to Jim about that. We didn't really get into depth in regards to, in regards to that.
Salary, really the right word? Compensation.
Yeah, compensation, yeah. Yes. Good point.
And that would be as part of the budgetary process, correct?
Yeah, yeah, so that wouldn't happen until our, we start the budget process come November, October, November.
Is that set by local law as well, like, the, the amount?
No, usually it's just a resolution by, through the budget. So when you adopt the budget, you're essentially adopting the salaries or compensation stipend, whatever you want to call it, for the next, for the next year.
All right. All right, last 2 items. So an update on the Cornwall Yacht Club lease agreement and proposed public kayak rack. So as I said last week's meeting, myself and Jim have met with 2 representatives of the Cornwall Yacht Club. We've met with them several times over the past few months. They've been fruitful meetings. I, I think both parties are trying to work this out in earnest. I prepared, based upon our discussions and our give and takes on, on, on both sides, I think we're, we've made some very good steps towards it coming to a, a final agreement. One would be essentially an amendment to the, to the lease. I've made, I've made the proposed changes. The yacht club came back, the 2 representatives for the yacht club came back to me and asked me for, identified some additional changes, which I, I don't think the board would have an, an issue with. So I'm making those changes, I'll hand it off to, we'll hand it off to those 2 representatives. And then with the idea of then having the attorneys, after they get a feel for whether or not they think it could pass, we'll, we'll, we're gonna share it obviously with the board, and then we'll have our attorneys look at it. So this past few months, we have not been using, we've not been spending on, you know, using our attorneys and to pay for this, so Jim and I have been working on it ourselves. And it's, I think, we've met several times with the individuals, so I think, I think we're getting there. Now we're just gonna look for John first or Joe McKay not to, not to, I don't want to say screw it up, no. No, we're hoping, we're hoping.
Aren't you an attorney too?
Yes, so. The other portion of this is the kayak racks. We are looking to put, we've been talking about this for years. We are looking to put kayak racks down at the water, down in the waterfront there. That could, that could potentially happen. Is it gonna happen in this season? Highly unlikely, but very good possibility that it could happen by the end of the year or, or for next season. So we're, we're working on that, we'll keep you updated. There's been, I've met with a couple of people who have, who have volunteered to help out in building the kayak racks. So what, what that help, and I think some actually have volunteered to even, even pay for the materials, but obviously DPW would, would get involved in that also. With that, it would include what I've seen other municipalities do, and that is, with respect to those kayak spaces, it would first go to, first preference would go to village residents and then town residents and then, and then beyond that. We'll come, we'll come up with an, an app, another application. A fee, a fee schedule, and then how, and how we're gonna open it up and how many spaces we're gonna have. But more to come on that, we'll keep everyone apprised as that, as that develops. Okay, last item is the update on the New York Forward and Recreational Trails Grant awards. Okay, I know in regards to the New York Forward grant, we already, everyone already knows that we were, the town and the village were awarded substantial amount. Many of the projects were included. At this point, in the last email traffic, I see going back and forth. The village is waiting just to set up, we're trying to set up a, a, a meeting with the state to go over our next steps in regards to how the monies are administered, how we go forward with the, with the contracts. We know that it's 2 years from when the contract is, is signed to get a shovel in the ground, so to speak, to get these projects done. So more to come on the New York Forward grant as soon as we have, we'll give another update as soon as we have our meeting with New York State, which should happen, I believe, between now and our next meeting on July 15th. With respect to the recreational trails grant, Bill, do you know, can you?
I don't know, there, there was, I believe, a $200,000 grant that was made for the purpose of planning and, and design for a segment of the connector trail that goes between Donahue Farm and the Donahue Memorial Park. So it would be for the landing pad on the Bayview Avenue side of the, right at the driveway, I believe. And I believe it's for the planning and engineering and, and design work.
Right, and Jim pointed out that, that the New York Forward Consortium from New York State, they like, when we applied for this grant, they liked the fact that we were applying for other, other grants and that we had, we had gotten this award too, so that, that helped us out.
Yes, and those are defined, I think, as discrete projects, so that they don't step on each other's toes. If you want to build this landing pad and, and crosswalk kind of improvement.
Yeah, New York Trails is 243,000.
Okay, excellent, thanks Dave.
The connector is 700, so between the 2, it's almost a mil, it's a million dollars.
Right. It's gonna be beautiful, but more to, more to come on that.
Right.
All right, for, for your information, let's see, some upcoming meetings. So tomorrow, June 18th, the Planning Board is meeting here. June 25th, primary election day for Democrat and Conservative Parties only. Not Republican Parties, Democrat and Conservative Parties here in the Village Boardroom. June 26th at 6, oh, and that's, that election, primary election is our standard times, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. With respect to Cornwall graduation from high school, that's June 26th at 6:00 PM. And then on July 5th at 7:00 PM, we have movie on the, Movies on the Hudson, and the movie is Barbie at Donahue Memorial Park.
That's the youth, the Cornwall Youth Committee.
Cornwall Youth Committee, okay.
Is that fundraiser for them?
Lots, yes. We're gonna have lots of drink and food and kids crafts, jumpy houses.
Right.
Very Barbie, lots of Barbie.
Is that liquid alcoholic refreshments that will be served? Adult beverages, as Jim would say?
Yes, sir.
And, and just to note, the running time for Barbie is 1:54, not 2:40.
2. Is that, are you comparing to Hamilton?
I see what he did there.
It was cold and late.
I was, I, I was, I was not here, I was gone for the past few days, so anybody, who, who attended?
Yeah, wait till it gets dark.
And was it well-attended, Bill?
It was, yeah, for 2/3, I would say, it thinned out toward the end.
2/3, and it was very good.
Cold and late.
It was very good and the, and the quality was, was, the screen and everything was just amazing.
And there was only 1 train.
Yeah.
Right at the very beginning, there was 1 train.
We shut down the whole northeast quarter for us.
And the sound was fantastic. And how, and the show is a tearjerker.
It's crazy.
And how did the introduction by, by Phyllis?
Fortunately, you couldn't see or hear it, because it was still lit, no.
Did you say fortunately or?
No, I'm sorry, what?
No, you have it on your phone.
Yeah, I know, I did say. Speak into the mic again?
It was, it was actually well-received by the crowd. That was, there was a, a good-sized crowd at that point, and there was appreciative laughter rippled through the crowd.
All right, very good. All right, moving on to our last item, and that's public comment. Do we have anyone in the audience who would have, who has a comment? Carol? Nothing? All right, Carol, Rick? All right. Gentlemen, no? Okay, all right. So let's go around the horn here, comments by the, by the trustees. Let's start with our gentle lady.
Do I have any left? I think I said my piece, looking forward to the Barbie movie. No, I guess that's about it.
All right. Sounds like we've won a little league game. Bill?
Yeah, it's not hard.
I, I was gonna mention Hamilton, it was, it was terrific, really, really good. I don't know what the results were for the July 4th Committee, but they, they were selling food and drink, and there was the appeal from the mayor and from Phyllis in the video at the beginning, and hopefully it, it did well for them. And then, yeah, just to mention that it's, between now and our next meeting, we will have had July 4th, the actual day of festivities and parade and all of that. the actual day of festivities and parade and all of that stuff, so.
That's right, good point. Dave?
Um, just a couple things, um, the movie was great and, uh, thanks to everyone who came out. The food, the food vendors were, were very good too. On another note, um, often, uh, you know, we spend a lot of time kicking Central Hudson, but, um, thanks, thanks to them from, uh, for, uh, for Newburgh for, uh, responding to our street, um, light list from Charlie Tonason, a longtime member of, uh, Storm King Engine Company. And, uh, he sent in a list and they, they got, they completed the list within a couple days, so. People have a list of streetlights that they need taken care of, let us know and we'll try to get it done, but they, they got them all done, so.
Dave, question, as those get replaced, they're being replaced with LED, right?
Yes, absolutely, one for one, yeah.
We can report that to, um, the.
It's one of the reasons why.
Uh, the regional council and get points toward the climate smart community, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, they're getting there, I mean, it's, you know.
Yeah.
But anyways, good for them.
And the fleet, fleet inventory as well, that'll also get us points.
Yes.
Anything else, Dave?
No, that's it for me.
Okay, so I have, um, as Bill said, don't forget our July fourth parade. That's always wonderful and all the other festivities that go along with it. Last year, Jim and I had to, or, not had to, we willingly participated in, in the play, in the play.
Oh, right.
Yes.
We're not sure what the play is yet, we're waiting for Chris, we're waiting for Chris Meyer to dictate the.
Is he doing it again?
Yeah, he's doing it, yeah.
Okay.
The pet show.
I haven't got this, the, uh, I don't know what this is yet, we don't know.
With the pet show, I, um, yes, I already, Bridget already told me, um, that Jim can't do it, so I have to do it, so I told her I'd bring my two dogs who are.
They're beasts, they're vicious.
No, they're not, but in any case, so.
My daughter will be helping with the junior Catholic daughter to put that on.
Alright.
Also this year have, um, a brass, uh, quartet from United States Military Academy at West Point will be performing on the Fourth of July.
Oh, wow, that's great. So Dave, how, how is, how are we looking in regards to fundraising?
Good, we're doing good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're doing good, we did good the other night, you know, that was our fun, one of our fundraisers. I mean, we have a lot, we have a lot of fundraisers, but we did, we did very well the other night.
Alright, well.
Yeah, no, we're doing good.
Hopefully the weather will, uh, carry over, not at ninety-five degrees, but.
Yeah, I know.
So, so keep a lookout for that. And last thing, um, just a thank you to Dave and the DPW workers for, um, cleaning up after River Fest.
Yes.
And, um, the work on the pavilion, it does look, it looks great once we get the, a nice.
Donahue Shed getting done tomorrow.
And, right, Donahue Shed, and there was something else, hold on, the.
Oh, that's right.
The kennel is, the kennel's getting done tomorrow, is that right?
Yes.
Will that be a one-day?
Gone in a dumpster.
Project or multiple?
We'll see how it goes.
Alright, I'm gonna get a drone up there and, and start, and film some of it, hopefully.
We're, we're all set for tomorrow.
What time you starting?
Right, Charlie, as soon as we can get there.
I don't know, can you, you know?
Send it from your house, for God's sake, you don't even have to get out of bed, Bill. It's close enough, as a crow flies.
An assist from, uh, the town and the Windsor Highway Department is assisting us. They sent their large, uh, wheeled excavator.
Wow.
Oh, wow.
To help us, we'll have, uh, one of the village's mini excavators there as well. We've got a couple forty-yard roll-offs, we'll have all our crew there, we're gonna try to get as much of it done as we possibly can tomorrow. It's gonna be hot, but.
Yeah.
It's gonna be hot.
Yep.
And Mary Donahue has taken.
Before July first, because we're scheduled for July first to oil and chip the roadway through there, I wanna have all that added there.
Oh, that's, that's the schedule, July one?
We do that, yes, sir.
And Mary Donahue has taken the before picture where she's standing out in front of the kennel building and then she's prepared to take an after picture after, uh, after it's removed. And also, uh, there's four, four or so trees that have been, uh, marked for retention, is that right?
The ones that are in front of the building, we're gonna leave a laundry support because they're gonna come out. But the, the trees in front, we're, we're gonna have to trim them a little bit tomorrow morning just to, so we don't damage them while we're working, but with the stuff behind it, most of it's gonna go.
Okay.
Alright, anything else, any alibis?
No.
Gentlemen, none? I'll make a motion to adjourn today's meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, what's new, big John? How you been, buddy? Good to see you.